We should call to order this work session of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, November the first, 2023, and again, all Commissioners are present in the Nat U Hill Room. So, first item up is Clerk Nicole Brown with Pitney Bowes Agreement for Postage Machine at Election Central. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for your time. We lease our postage machines. There are not, with the vendors that we use, there are not postage machines that are for sale. They get outsourced, improved. And so, our lease was up, and they do not allow you to extend your lease. You sign a new lease. So, for the two that I've brought for you today, these are new leases because our other leases expired. These are similar to the postage leases that you would have signed for Court Services last year when they negotiated a lease with the same vendor.
So, questions or comments? So, the first one we're looking at is the five-year lease, or five-year lease for Election Central in a total amount of $1,682, and, sorry, I'm trying to get back to, trying to go back and forth to things. And that was billed quarterly at $841.11, right?
Correct.
Just for, I think you said $1,600 and 841 quarterly would be closer to $3,300.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's a half year. We're looking at the Election Central. I took this directly from their contract as far as how they bill us quarterly. I was asked for the annual, and I provided that in an email. But the lease is five years. Perhaps that clears up some confusion?
I just think the math was wrong. If it's 800 bucks quarterly, then over the course of a year, it's going to be 3,200 bucks. So, she said 16, and she, it should have been-
That's for five years altogether, sorry.
That's correct.
But it's per year. It's 841 times four and not 841 times two.
Two, right.
That was by a whole state.
If I misstated, I apologize.
I think Commissioner Skiffen stated it, so I just want to make sure that when we look back, it's clear.
Yes, sir.
So, it's $3,364.44 for the year.
Yes, ma'am.
Does that sound right? Okay, and you're asking us to sign these contracts today, is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have a motion on this first item?
You'll have to give me a second. I'm still grabbing all the info I need here. Should we do an annual?
Do we have to do a five-year contract, or are you asking about the annual amount?
That is what was presented to us, and again, this is similar, exactly similar to what you just did for Court Services last year.
That's an annual amount.
That's the annual amount, yeah.
Okay. I just don't have a fund name, fund number, and all that stuff.
Oh, do you have a fund number and a fund name for us?
It looks like-
The fund number-
The second one has one, but not this one. Oh, there we go.
Oh, there it is.
There it is. Okay. So, this is for, so I move approval of Pitney Bowes Agreement for Postage Machine for Election Fund name: Election Voter Registration. Fund number is 1215-30006-0010, in the amount of $841.11 per quarter for five years.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this?
So, we're going to have to get this, we're going to have to ratify this next week.
Ratify this next week, right, right. Anything else, Mr. Cockrell, that we should know about this, or Ms. Turner-King?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. Seeing no public comment, call for a vote on the Pitney Bowes Lease Agreement for Postage Machine at Election Central Voter Registration Office. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I'm not going to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were-
Yeah, no. Go ahead.
The next item is the same type of agreement, but for the postage machine at the Justice Building in the Clerk's office. Again, very similar to what you would have signed last year for Court Services. The, again, it's billed quarterly, Mr. Cockrell, and I provided the number, the annual number, for the Commissioners at their request in an email this morning.
So, is this postage machine located in your office, but then Court Services has a different postage machine?
Correct. We used to, we used to have one in my office that was used by both Court Services, and it just, we got to a place where people were confusing account numbers. People were saying, "You, you used your postage, you ran your postage under my account number, and numbers weren't adding up." And so, to, when our lease was up, then Court Services got their own, and we got our own to dispel the number, to try to tamp down on the confusion between our offices. There's a large volume of mail that goes out for Court Services. There's a large volume of mail that goes out for my office, and-
But you indicated to me in an email this morning that the higher cost for the one in the Clerk's office is because it handles the mail for the clerk and the courts.
We do handle mail for both the clerks and the courts. Court Services sends out some of their own mail. The courts send out some of their own mail, but there is mail that the clerk is directed to send out on behalf of the courts.
Okay. Questions or comments?
I'm still reading through the emails, sorry. It seems like we should be getting these before they're signed. These contracts-
Does this lease start next, on January 1st of 2024, or when does it start?
I think it is effective upon, we will send it back to the, we don't have the machines, if that's-
Oh, you don't have them yet?
No.
Okay, all right, good. Well, that helps. Okay. Seems like a lot of money over confusion with account numbers. You know, that the taxpayers are, you know, I get it. I get what you're saying, that there's, there's some confusion.
I just want to throw in an idea.
Yeah.
Because it does, it does not make sense to have multiple machines that we're leasing as a county, is, because, and the money that pays for the postage is all coming out of the same pot, County General, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't know, maybe something to consider in the future would be to get one postage account, and that money runs through, say, your office. And so, every document that goes through that's a court-related document is going to be using that fund.
Could, I mean, this is really, so what you're saying, and I think this is really interesting, is to, if the council just changes the budget line, so that they're merging the two budget lines into one line, through either courts or clerk, it doesn't matter to us, but maybe that's-
Takes care of the account volumes.
Yeah, yeah. Can, can we, can we look into that before we sign this? Because this is, this is a lot of money for five years, for something that-
It's difficult.
Yeah, yeah. Can, could we have, could you broach council, maybe, with that question? Or should we? We can.
I can.
But it just, it just seems, it just seems like that would be the easiest way to-
Clerk and Court Administrator would want to work it out. I don't want to work out. You know what I mean? It's, I could mention it to council, and then they could reach out to clerk and Court Administrator.
We could talk to council. What do you think? Can we, can we postpone this for a week or two?
I, I would like to, yeah, I would like to save the, because this is-
I mean, we want to, we want to make sure you're covered.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just, we're just trying to-
This is almost $23,000 of taxpayer money. And if it all just goes through one-
Fitzhall County General.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to separately lease machines unless there's things that we don't know about. We'd love to hear about it from you, then.
This apparently appears to be a bait, a complete, we have, we did try to keep the accounts, you know, to use one machine. It did not, it did not work. I don't know how to make it work, you know, where one office is not accusing the other office of taking postage. It got beyond the pale. You have already signed one for Court Services, and there's no confusion about the mail that goes through Court Services. This is, I'm asking you to sign a similar one for my office, for the mail that we send out. There is nothing nefarious going on. We just want to do the business.
So, so maybe if I explain it this way, it'll help. So, County General Fund A funds Court Services mail. County General Fund B pays postage, pays for this lease for postage meter through Clerk's office. If the council were to merge A and B together into one fund, then it wouldn't matter who uses the meter. You wouldn't have to log in with a separate account number, right? So, it's up to the, so if the council's willing to consider, oh, here we go. We've got, we've got some good reps here. Thank you for coming in. If the council's willing to consider merging the two funds into one, just so there's no confusion about account numbers or anything else, it's all one account number, it won't matter who's using the machine, whether it's Court Services or Clerk at that building.
You won't have to log in.
A and B will be merged together.
Yeah.
That's what we did with tele, with our cell phones and everything.
There we go.
So, before, we were getting, you know, multiple invoices and sending them out to the different departments to pay for their cell tech, solar, or whatever stuff. And that was just not a very efficient use of time for anybody, so we just, you guys made the decision that the T S D will just, and in agreement with the council, decided to just fund the phones primarily through that one account. It makes it much easier.
But hopefully, there was a cost savings, yeah. Michelle, or Mr. Turner-King, do you have something? And, and this was not a bait, a complete, we, I saw this late yesterday, so I don't know. Yeah.
Well, Michelle has looked up the account lines, and so she has additional information on how it's currently budgeted.
Please, please.
So, the courts and the clerk have their own postage line, and it's called postage. So, they use the same account number. It's called postage. The only difference is that one is labeled clerk, with their location number, the other is labeled courts. So, I'm wondering if, if the confusion is, it's not necessarily an account number, but if it's maybe a user ID number that they punch in for that?
That's what she's talking about, is the user ID, not the account in the financial software.
Right. But, I mean, council could, you know, like, deappropriate one department's postage line and move it to another, but that would have to come as a request, you know? But at this point, right now, we can't do anything because the budget hasn't been officially approved by the state, and we won't get that official stuff until, like, the end of December. And we can't make any changes with regards to making that type of a change until after the first of the year, so.
But if, but if they're willing to do that, there could be an overage in one account for a little bit, and we'll figure it out.
The other issue is that this lease is coming from a different, should be coming from a different account. Postage is one thing. The lease agreement should be coming from a different account.
Some, some departments do contractual, some, some do postage. And I just happened to look up, but they do both have contractual, they both do have postage, so I don't-
I think it needs to be a contractual.
But they're in, but they're in services, so, yeah.
I guess I'd-
So, that's, yeah.
I'd ask Michelle a question. When the council goes through the budgets, is it important to them to have a line for postage in the clerk? I mean, do they talk about it as, as an important thing, to have these separate lines?
No, I think it's whatever the department deems they want, you know, and to use that for, so that's totally on them. You know, if we want to run a report that says, you know, "What's the cost of postage?" I will print a report using the account number called postage. If they have something under a lease, you know, like a contractual, I won't know that, so.
We definitely need to have the lease agreements in the correct line, which would be a contractual line, so that we can keep track. And I would think the auditor would want that because they actually have to align their lease agreements with the payments that are being made, so I'm surprised that hasn't been caught. But going back to, we had, at one point in time, talked about, you know, what it'd be like to have, instead of having multiple machines, now, we still have to have multiple machines because we have multiple departments, but maybe we don't need four. Like, for instance, the prosecutor has a Pitney Bowes machine. I think that you have one, and Court Services now have one. So, there's three machines we're paying a lease for, but maybe we could have one machine at the Justice Building that everybody uses, and, you know, the postage, the contractual agreement, I don't want to put it in our budget, but we could, because, again, it's all the same bucket. So, we could have the overarching contractual agreement, and somebody could be responsible for the postage, and Bob's your uncle, you're all set.
Right, and, and so postage, I mean, to me, as I'm looking at it, if you're paying for postage, that's like a supply. You're, you're paying for, like, stamps. So, that would be like a supply line. But this is in the services, so that would be, like, maybe postage slash, you know, lease agreement, you know? I mean, but we can fix account lines however we need to, but I'm just saying, this is what we're working with currently, so.
Sure, and I, what I can see here is that that's possibly what's causing problems for department heads, is if something is allowed to be paid from a line that doesn't indicate that it's a contractual agreement, auditor's not going to catch it, and the department head isn't going to necessarily think that they're going to have to have a contractual agreement, so.
I have no reason to believe that this has not been paid out of contractual.
Yeah, yeah. Without, without, without going in and looking at detail, I wouldn't know if it was, you know, a lease agreement, or, let's just say, you know, stamps, yeah. Okay. I, but I just wanted to give you that clarification of how, you know, what's going on and how it's divided up, so it's just, the departments will have to just work it out, kind of thing, however you guys decide to move forward, so. Okay?
Yeah, I'll chat with you and Kate, maybe later, and Molly, about what I'm kind of thinking, and then the council can then reach out to the clerk.
So, I have a question. Do you currently have a machine?
Yes, but, but that machine is being, has been phased out, is being phased out, and when your lease is up, you do not get to extend the lease. You get a new lease, and everybody's costs have gone up. I don't think that, I mean, I don't think that they, they work with multiple government units. I don't think this is an effort to gouge. Like, as you indicated, other offices have their postage machine. This is simply the one for the Clerk's office.
So, if, since you have one that can be used at this point, I would like to explore this additional option to try to save taxpayers some money here. And it's not anything nefarious at all. It's just trying to be a good steward of, yeah, of what we do. So, can we bring this back in a week or two? And in the meantime, we'll try to get some of this other items sorted out. We're not saying no. We're just saying we'd like a little more time.
You are at liberty to do that, Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And we'll, we'll work with you on that. Okay. We've got another item from you, so let's move on.
The final item is for seeking the Commissioner's approval and signature for the early voting commercial that is running. That is one of the ways that we educate the public, that we can vote early, and this is a contract you've signed in the past, same contract, same running of commercials, and...
Comments or questions?
So, there was some clarification sent via email about this.
Well, I mean, we, we want elections promoted. We clearly do, but usually, we get, we get contracts to sign before something like this goes into effect, and there also was a problem because one of the ads had to be pulled.
Yes.
And so, I don't know if we're still paying for the, those time slots.
You're paying for the time slots, but instead of the commercial where the polling sites were running, they just ran all one commercial for the same-
They didn't switch commercials back and forth? Is that what you're saying?
Right, right. And so, here, here's the bottom line. The month of September just got away from all of us, ramping up for early voting. I had two conferences. We lost a beloved employee, and we're ramping up for early voting. That doesn't even factor in if a meeting was canceled by the Commissioner. We have an incredible vendor who's very generous and wanted to work with us. They understand that, you know, it can take some time to get the contract signed, and because we are good customers, they were willing to work with us, which frankly allowed me the time to focus on getting ready for early voting.
So, I also had a question, this, that I didn't think of last night when I emailed you. It lists all the different channels, but is this, does it affect TV only do things like through Comcast? Because so many other people, so many people, residents, are no longer using that as a way to get their TV.
I mean, they also, if you get your, by, by streaming on the computer, it kind of all rolls into one. It can come up on your phone, if you watch it on your phone. I don't, that part, I can't break down. I just know that the commercial runs in, under various, or methods.
I guess I just, I'm, I'm concerned about what the, the true reach is, you know, in terms of our population. Do we have a-
It's, it's one method. I mean, we use radio, we use, you know, over your, over your phone, just depends on who the vendor is. And this one is the television one. And this one is effective, Madam Commissioner. I hear about it all the time.
I, I would just ask that, that they, in the future, they get to us earlier, if possible? I mean, we missed, we had one meeting that we canceled, but we're here three out of four weeks a month, easily, and so, and all summer, and whatever else. So, in the future, if we could get it sooner, that would be great, because, you know, there's, there's questions that can be asked that, you know, at this point, we can't ask, you know, about reach and digital and all of that. I know, because we do the same thing with the Solid Waste Management District Board. We have the same issue about, is this really a good contract? So, it's not just you. It is just a, a question that we ask a lot. I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the contract for airing the 2023 early voting commercials. The fund name: Clerk Election. Fund number: 1215-30006-0062, in the amount of $2,500.
Second.
I would like to just make one, and I, and I think I've made this recommendation to people in the Clerk's office before, is that there is nothing wrong with when you prepare these for the, for the primary election, you go ahead and get the, the information for the general election, and we just do the contract at the beginning of the year, and then we're not, we're not rushing-
And that, that is something I wish I had done differently, because, again, this, this is a very critical time, and-
And I don't know if it's because of the people, because of the partners we're working with, they, they can't schedule it out that long, or something like that, but I, I always make that recommendation whenever these were brought to me, that, hey, can you just go and ask them if they can give you what the next round will look like, so we can just do it all at once?
And we will make every effort to do that going forward.
Be great.
Well, and I, I will note, too, that all that's listed in the contract are, are channels, are television channels. There's nothing listed here for a radio, there's nothing listed here for-
Well, she does radio as a PSA, I would assume, a public service announcement, so there's a fee for that.
And I, I did not do radio for this election.
Oh.
That's why you don't have a radio contract.
Okay. There shouldn't have to be one. It should just be a public service announcement that goes out for free, but that's-
That's a different issue. Yeah, that's not, that's not what we're talking, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I guess I, I would like to see contracts in advance as well.
Understood.
I think that's, yeah, that's the way we like to operate. As Commissioner Thomas said, we can't ask questions post hoc of what's going on, what we're getting for the money. Is there any public comment on this? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the 2023 early voting commercial for the general election, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero, and we'll have to ratify this next week. Okay.
When you refer to ratifying, does that mean we won't have signatures prior to?
Right.
I think that you'll have signatures. They're just going to ratify the signature at a public meeting.
Right. We have to take, we have to advertise and then take a vote.
So, I do not need to return next week?
That is at the pleasure of the board.
Given that it's election, that'll be the day after the election.
We will need to have a formal agenda item sent to us, correct?
Yeah, it needs to be put on our agenda.
Okay. I, I think, because I was on the, I had made a request to be on the formal agenda, and, okay, thank you.
We didn't, we didn't-
We didn't see a formal, was, was a formal submission done?
Yes, back in October, and so-
Oh, okay. Well, we'll look into that.
Thank you.
We'll still, we'll still need a, a formal request for next week. Okay, thank you.
Tell me to go ahead and make a motion on the next item.
Yes, let's go ahead with the next item.
Move approval of a contract with Riverway Plumbing LLC for plumbing repair to the Monroe County Jail. Fund number, fund name: 2022 GO Bond. Fund number: 4815, in the amount of $8,285.
Second.
And we have Mr. Kreider here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Facilities and Fleet. Thanks for having me at this work session. This is my attempt to get many plumbing projects done in one agenda request. This request is to approve multiple plumbing repair projects in the combined amount of $8,285 at the Monroe County Jail. The scope of work-
Good morning, Commissioners, Richard Kreider, Facilities and Fleet. Thanks for having me at this work session. This is my attempt to get many plumbing projects done in one agenda request. This request is to approve multiple plumbing repair projects in the combined amount of $8,285 at the Monroe County Jail. The scope of work includes replacement of three shower systems in the trustees area in the amount of $6,400, with additional work in the kitchen, including replacing the dishwasher floor drain and surrounding cement for improved flow in the amount of $500, replacing the drain lines and basket strainers under three sinks in the amount of $785, and replacing the cement around the perimeter of the steel floor sink in the amount of $600.
Questions or comments?
No, it's, it's needed.
I feel like we just did this like four, three or four years ago. I had, I read it and then I read it again this morning and I'm like, didn't we do the dishwasher and the drain already? We could very well have. I know that part of it, we had an issue with the grease trap. And, and maybe that's what I'm thinking of.
We had the grease trap, we did a big laundry drain project recently.
Yeah, yeah, this was a few years back, this was, this is years ago.
Before you.
Yeah, before you were, you took on this lovely job that you have. Anyway, I just was like, am I having a deja vu moment? No, it's important work, it needs to get done, yeah.
Are, are all these sinks in the kitchen or...
No, actually, the, the shower systems are up on the, the fifth floor and the, the fixtures are behind the, the shower walls and to access them, removal means replacement. And it's unfortunate, but it's also why we get excited when we visit other facilities and they have giant plumbing chases that we can work in, you know? So, and then, yeah, some of the other projects are kitchen drainage issues that need to be addressed.
It may have been piping, like ceramic, I, it went from metal that had deteriorated to a ceramic or a PVC in the kitchen. Yeah, no, this is years ago. This may have even been before your time.
Before me, oh my gosh.
I just, I just kept going, I feel like we've done this, but yeah, but this is different, so I'm, I'm good with it, we need to get it done.
Yeah, yeah. Any public comment on this item?
And I do need to add one thing to this. There is one quote that I have not received yet. The dishwasher drain work will require removal of the dishwasher while that's happening and we're going to have to bring in some, a company like Gouldy's or something like that to perform that work, so more to come.
There'll be a little, a little added something, something to that, okay?
All right.
Okay. Okay, now, is there any public comment on this item?
I would just ask that, Richard, when I'm looking at page one, page two clear, the, the $600 clearly shows the tax rate, but that we're not paying any taxes. Page one has the tax rate still there, but doesn't have the subtotal, so just make sure when they bill us, we aren't paying taxes, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Cockrell. Okay, well, with that, I'll call for a vote on the Riverway Plumbing proposal for plumbing repairs in the jail, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero, thanks for coming up here. Is there anything else that we need to have on the work session today? Seeing none, we will adjourn this meeting and we will be back next week on November, Wednesday, November the 8th. Thank you, everyone.